All right, good evening, everyone. Good afternoon. Thank you all. I'm sorry, I was upstairs in a meeting. Welcome to the 4:00 PM work session for Lynchburg City Council on today, January 28th. And first up, we have, number one, a presentation and discussion regarding the city's long-term residential units, and that is Mr. Martin. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the purpose of this afternoon's meeting, presentation, is to engage in a discussion with council concerning long-term rental of residential units within the city of Lynchburg. This is the second discussion of concerning residential housing requested by council since the adoption of short-term rental ordinance in October 8th, 2019. City staff discussed single-household development with council back in December 10th of 2019. So what we'd like to do today is just discuss exactly what is a long-term rental, where long-term rentals are allowed, discuss our occupancy standards, how many people can be in a unit, discuss what the comprehensive plan says, how we're implementing some of the goals of the comprehensive plan, and then just have a discussion with council. So, the zoning ordinance does not specifically define what a long-term rental is, but it can be interpreted since the zoning ordinance does define what a short-term rental is. Short-term rentals are the primary accessory or secondary use of a residential dwelling unit or portion thereof intended to be occupied for less than 30 consecutive days. So, a long-term rental is anything over 30 consecutive days. The zoning ordinance does not prohibit the rental of any units on a long-term basis. So, anywhere in the city, if you have a permitted residential unit, does not have to be owner-occupied, you can rent that out, whether it's a single household, whatever, it can be rented on a long-term basis. Certain zoning districts within the city actually do promote the rental of units. So if you think about our higher residential, higher-density residential uses, like the R3 medium-density, the R4 multi-high-density, the multifamily apartments, and our commercial districts, those districts actually encourage the rental of the units because they're higher-density, larger number of units on one lot. So you're basically, you're creating rental units. The state code does not allow localities to impose a transient tax for occupancy of fewer than 30 days. The state code allows localities to impose a transient tax on occupancy of fewer than 30 days. So things like hotels, Airbnb, the city can impose a tax on that. The state code expressly prohibits localities from imposing their license fee or levying any license tax for the rental of real property other than transient-style accommodations. So, if it's a long-term rental, we cannot tax them different than our normal property tax rate that we do for anything else. So, where are these units? I found this map to actually be very interesting, and actually surprised me on the sheer number of units within the city that are actually being used for rental. This is a map that was done by GIS that actually shows the properties in Lynchburg that are used for residential purposes that have a mailing address that is different than the property address. So if it's going somewhere else, we interpreted that to be, mean that it's rental. If you look at the 2017 American Community Survey data, it actually confirms this distribution, which was also surprising to me, that there's roughly a 50/50 split in the city of owner-occupied units versus units that are rental. The data says that there's 28,150 total occupied units in the city of Lynchburg. Of those, 13,978 are owner-occupied, 14,172 are rental. So, and there's a margin of error of plus or minus of 1.7 percent, but it's roughly a 50/50 split. So I dug a little deeper, and I said, "Okay." Well, I asked, "What does the single-household units look like?" And there's actually an 80/20 split of those, of the total number of single-household units in the city. Eighty percent of those are owner-occupied, and about 20 percent of those are actually used as rental.
It just goes that my house is listed as a rental unit in that list, because I get everything sent to a PO address. So, there's going to be a little bit of wiggle room there, but the fact that you coordinate, you correlated between two different sources and they're about the same, I think you've got good data.
Right.
And I also am surprised.
So, let's talk about occupancy standards. Up until February 13th of 1990, the zoning ordinance permitted up to no more than five unrelated persons in a residential unit. In 1990, city council amended the zoning ordinance to provide for not more than three unrelated people. This amendment was in response to citizen complaints regarding the large numbers of unrelated people in residential units, namely college students. So back in 1990, or for 30 years now, the total number of people in a unit has been limited to no more than three unrelated people. During the rewrite of the zoning ordinance that was adopted in February of 2016, council spent a great amount of time discussing the occupancy standard. Ultimately, council decided to leave it at the no more than three unrelated. However, they did choose to change what the definition of a related person was. And the zoning ordinance defines related people as related individuals include people that are related by blood, are married to each other, are in substantially a similar relationship, and children under their care. And the definition down below is just where the ordinance is setting the occupancy standard to no more than three. So let's talk about what the comprehensive plan says. The comprehensive plan that was adopted back in 2013 states that it recognizes the impact of college students on the city's housing needs, and that the growth on the demand of rental property throughout the city is going to increase because of college students. Students are a significant proportion of the city's population, and a significant proportion of those students are seeking rental housing off-campus. And that causes the students to compete with lower and moderate-income families for affordable housing within the city. So, also during the preparation of the comprehensive plan, citizens expressed their concern about rental housing, especially properties that were poorly managed. The plan recommends that the city should encourage that upkeep and the rehabilitation of these rental properties be done. And the plan specifically recognized the success of the city's rental housing program. These are the goals of the comprehensive plan related to housing, provide diverse housing choices, increasing the number of owner-occupied units, rehabilitating substandard units, supporting initiatives to increase permanent affordable rental and housing ownership opportunities, support programs that assist individuals in retaining their homes during economic crisis, and also eliminating deterioration, blight, and blighting influences in our neighborhoods. So, we can't really have a discussion on rental housing in the city unless we talk about the rental housing and inspection, registration and inspection program. Back in 1991, council directed the Department of Community Development to develop a rental inspection, and the goal of this was to eliminate blighted properties in the city. An ordinance implementing the rental inspection program was adopted in January 1st, 1994, but in March of 2005, council adopted an amendment that included a $50 inspection fee. And these guys know way more about this program than I do, but that's really what got us going, is when that $50 fee could be charged. So, this map shows the area of the current rental housing registration and inspection program. It's older parts of the city. It contains about 3,800, 3,800 estimated rental units. In 2018, there were 445 rental inspections, and last year in 2019, staff did 790 rental inspections. So the program is actually working very well. So why is this program important? The rental inspection district has the highest ratio of renters and the oldest housing stock in the city, with about a quarter of that housing stock being over 60 years old. Staff are certified by the Department of Virginia Housing, Community Development, and Property Maintenance, and serve as an important resource to landlords and tenants. Now, what does serving as a resource to landlords and tenants really mean? You know, if you think about a tenant in these areas, there's many reasons that tenants might not complain about substandard housing conditions, right? They might be unaware of their rights as a tenant. There may be language barriers or disabilities that make it difficult for them to navigate our city code and enforcement actions. They might be afraid of landlord retaliation, and they might have limited income to do anything about it. So while filling vacant housing units is definitely beneficial, it can become troublesome if only limited attention is given to those units, you know, once the tenants have moved in. So if we have to go and inspect it in the beginning, that's fine, but we're interested in how that unit is maintained over time. And we believe that the current program is very progressive, and that it identifies property maintenance issues and ensures compliance with minimum standards of the property maintenance code. While this program is definitely more challenging to administer than just waiting for a typical reactive process, there are definitely inherent benefits to achieving the goal of safe and affordable housing. So that was a very brief presentation on rental in the city of Lynchburg. We'll be happy to answer any questions with you. If you have specific questions about the rental program, Mr. Keith Wright is here, as well as Kevin Henry, and the Director of Community Development, Kent Wine.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And I know this came up during our short-term rental Airbnb conversation, and I know I asked that information be brought back because we heard from different council members regarding long-term rentals. So I'm going to open it up to questions. Councilmember Heckelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish I had my notes with me, but I forgot them. But as I'm reading your first page, which that's kind of where I want to focus for a little bit, "Higher-density residential districts such as R3 and R4 promote rental due to allowances for higher densities on one property." So, we're now looking at this kind of in one fell swoop, but we, as a council, kind of look at things, the big picture for the big picture of the city. And so when I look over the course of many years, when we've had issue after issue that said it was an R1 property, that is now being recommended to be R3 or R4. According to these words here, we do know that these are going to be more likely to be rentals, according to what you have here. As the very first, you know, paragraph, it says these R3 and R4 are most likely going to be rental due to allowance for higher density on one property. Then I look down a little bit further on this page, where it has our housing goals. So having higher density, we know equates to more rentals, which is totally the opposite of the goal of increasing owner-occupied residences, owner-occupied units. It actually goes the opposite of rehabilitating substandard units. So when you look at economics and supply and demand, when we have a lot more of a supply, because we just approved a lot more of a supply, because we went from R1 to R3 or R4, that created this extra supply. So when you have a bigger supply, there's not an incentive to rehab some of these older units, other than if you have all of a sudden a new demand. So I think it goes against number three on here. It also goes against, you know, number five on there. You know, when you have a property that you're now, an older property that should be fixed up, but it's now being, it's competing against a brand-new one that's going to be a rental by design because of a new R3 or R4 that used to be an R1 neighborhood, it makes it much more difficult for them to improve an old house, because they now have to improve an old rental unit, improve that to be able to rent it out to compete with the market. So, you know, the very first sentence on there that talks about that we, which is now we know, I mean, that going to these high densities are not because they're going to be owner-occupied, they're going to be rental. So, I think as a city, we would do a whole lot better with our housing if we didn't keep approving or getting recommendations for approval for more densely populated areas of land, for going from an R1 to an R4.
Well, I'll try and respond. That was a lot to try and take in. So you're absolutely correct. R4 districts, for example, allow apartments. Obviously, if those districts are allowing apartments, they're going to be used for rental. Some of these goals, there are goals throughout the comprehensive plan that compete with one another, right? You know, increasing the number of owner-occupied units, that's absolutely a goal. Also, increasing the number of affordable units is a goal. You also have to look at what the market is doing. The market is changing. A lot of people do not want to have to maintain a home and a yard and all those things. I think the other, the argument you make about building new versus, you know, rehabbing old ones, you know, you're going to have a petition before your night about rehabbing a vacant building. That's something that we definitely support, and we should be supporting. If, the other thing that you have to take into account as a council is, if you want to continue to grow, and we've talked about this numerous times, the city is going to have to become more dense. We only have a certain amount of land, and if the city's going to grow in population, it has to allow more denser developments.
And I don't, I mean, the goal isn't to, I don't think that's, I think that's a proper, improperly presented goal. So, well, because to have an artificial goal that just says, "We want to grow for growth's sake." We want to grow reasonably. We want to have, grow our tax base. Sometimes that doesn't mean just having a lot more things. I mean, that means things that are productive. That means things that don't cost more than they bring in. You know, so if we're taking in for a rental property, $1,000, and we spend $14,400 for every child of theirs that goes to public schools, I don't think we make it up on volume. We lose by everyone. So with it, having things that are, you know, I look at our city, a long time ago when it was first chartered, it was just a little pocket downtown. It wasn't residence, it was business. In the '30s, my house was annexed. There were some houses around there, but it wasn't massive amounts of dense housing. So I don't think just to say, growing with more people is going to, may be fun, it may be a goal that people say, "Hey, we want to, you know, hit some number of people." But I think what I want us to do, me personally, is to have us be more fiscally responsible as we grow. I don't want us to just grow just for the sake of it, so.
So I think, two points. The housing around downtown is developed at a much denser rate than your typical R1 developments at 15,000 square foot lots. There's no doubt about that. The other thing I will say, you're right about responsible growth. Yet, if we want to continue to see a commercial growth, retail follows rooftop. That's an age-old saying. If we want to continue developing our commercial and our industrial bases, we have to have the employment base to support that. If you don't want to, you know, have these higher-density developments, you absolutely control where they go by your future land-use map and what you choose to rezone and not to rezone. You're going to have another petition coming before you in a month or so about rezoning some R1 land. If it's that concerning to council, don't rezone it. Absolutely don't do it.
And I voted against those and argued against them, and I guess now, lots of times, people said that, "Well, it's not necessarily going to be resident, or not going to be rental." And this, I think, kind of really points to the fact that, you know, they are going to be rental. And so with that, having more density, and that is up to council. I mean, obviously, when we recommend or vote to change an R1 to an R4, hopefully we'll consider protecting the neighborhood. Hopefully, we'll consider protecting, you know, those type of folks that like to live in R1 neighborhoods, because lots of them have moved to the county. And so, where they have a little more elbow room, so.
Yeah, I think, the other thing that you pointed out, and we almost got to this discussion back in December, and I'm not prepared to talk about it, and I'm not sure I'm the person that should be talking about it, is what is the tax base of a multifamily development compared to a single-family development, and what is the demand for services on that? And I could give you some ideas, but not with any facts right now.
Councilmember Perrow, thank you, Mr. Martin. Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that Councilmember Heckelson raised some, raised some good points. I'm gonna, the way I interpreted what you were saying is that you're worried about our neighborhoods. And the fact, the fact that Mr. Martin brought up earlier on was that half of our units in the city are rental. And it seems to me that if what Mr. Heckelson was alluding to is the fear of hitting a tipping point, we've got more renters living in the city than we do have owners. And I think that's a valid fear. Now, he said in R1, it was about 80/20 owners to renters, but overall, in the city of available units, it was about 50/50. And I think that's a valid concern, because we want to make sure that the city has an invested population that believe in the city, that have, that are financially tied to the city, I would think, and they're going to be the ones that provide the best long-term value to the city, the ones that are motivated to maintain their houses and make sure that their neighborhoods are safe and attractive. Because if you're, if you're a renter, then you don't like the neighborhood that you're in, you move. But if you live in the neighborhood, you're going to, you're going to invest in, if you, if you own the property, you're going to invest in it because it means a lot to you. So I appreciate what you were saying there. I would like to extrapolate onto another point, though, that you and I had the opportunity to speak about, and I think it also is part of what Mr. Heckelson was talking about. I've got some real concerns about how development is happening in B1 districts. I've got real concerns that developers are using B1 as a Trojan horse or a straw man, whatever you want to call it, in order to bring in basically R4 development into a business area. B1 development is mixed-use. It requires businesses to be on the first floor and can have multiple, multiple floors of apartments above it. I think we need to be wary about this, because people have come back, it happened in Cornerstone, if I remember correctly. There's supposed to be a business mix there, and they said, "Wait, the market's not going to support this. We need more apartments." And it's a way to backdoor into getting an effective R4 zoning in a business area. I think, and Mr. Martin, I'm not putting words in your mouth, or I hope I'm not, it's not my intent, but you may have suggested there could be some ways that we look at that as a ratio between number of apartments versus property size, or something that would be scalable, so that in effect, we could make sure it's actually an appropriate development for the area. So I think that's something worthwhile looking into, and if council doesn't object, I'd hope that maybe staff could look into that a little bit, to make sure that the B1 developments are constructed in such a way that maintains the business integrity of the B1, but allows for some housing.
Yeah, sure. I think, I think what you're talking about is when we rewrote the ordinance in 2016, we were trying to promote mixed-use within our commercial districts. Mixed-use is good, because you're trying to get people to live, work, and shop in the same place, which at least theoretically reduces the number of vehicle trips and those things on our roads. What I would hate to see is for someone to come in and develop a mixed-use development, and then with a lot of apartments in retail, but then come back at a later time and say, "Oh, well, retail's really not working for us. We want to ask council to rezone this." The majority is already apartments. That's counterintuitive to what we're trying to accomplish. So.
That's right. On slide 13, first bullet there says, "The rental inspection districts have the highest ratios of renters and oldest housing stock in the city." Is that still a true statement since 1990, or whenever this was put together?
Do you have one address? The age of the housing stock?
I'm sure age of the housing stock is right, but...
Oh, the highest ratios of renters?
Highest ratio of renters.
I'm hearing yes.
Okay. And is that based on census tracts?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are, if you look at the map, those are census tracts.
I thought, I thought I recognized that. So, maybe, maybe we don't need it. I was going to make the suggestion that we read, take a look at that, make sure that it's still, that our assumptions are still accurate, that those are still the most effective census tracts to take a look at. But it sounds like you guys are already on top of that. So, thank you.
How does that map correlate with the redlining that was done in our city years ago? Have we ever overlaid the two to look at that? The redlining of encircling housing stock for certain races in our city? So it was a common thing across the country, but Lynchburg has been on recent reports that we have low homeownership in our, when you look at our census tracts, some of our highest-poverty census tracts, but they were also areas of redlining in the city years ago.
You're talking about like lending practices?
Lending practices and that sort of thing, yeah.
I can't answer that without doing...
Okay. It's the same areas, isn't it? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. I just, having seen a few maps and correlating the information through various presentations, if we look at kind of multiple presentations, we kind of see a theme or pattern to how did we get to so many renters, less homeownership, and that sort of thing. So, any other questions? I saw the Vice Mayor, mm-hmm?
Yeah, I'm just, well, that 50/50 split number is a little staggering to me. And I just wonder if we have any information about, you know, nationally, I know that from research that they've put out, that homeownership is on the decline because of the mobility of younger people. They no longer stay in the career of their entire life. And I just wonder how, how we factor in what that means in terms of what we're looking at here.
I think it means we have a lot of apartments in the city. Is, I mean, I'm not trying to be short, but that's what it means. You know, for our single-household developments, we're supposed to call them single-household, single-family homes, right? 80/20 split, the majority of those are being used, are home occup, are owner-occupancies, right? The other, the other half of the rental units in the city are, they're being rented, right? Now what's driving that? A lot of things are driving that. The number of college students are driving it, the fact that the market conditions are changing. Yet, I would at least humbly offer that the people that are renting the units in our city are not, I don't know how to say it, they're no less of a citizen than anyone else, right? These are our nurses, doctors, police officers. I mean, my son's been dating a nurse that lives in Cornerstone. She rents. She definitely has a stake in this city, you know? Some people just don't want to buy a house right now, so.
I have something to add from the level, so.
Well, absolutely, yeah. I mean, what people can afford.
Any for, Councilmember Wright?
Well, to that point, I mean, I was a renter for a couple of years when I moved back, and when I got elected to council, so I was a renter, and pleased to be one. What are our general occupancy rates in the city? For our housing stock?
I've got that data somewhere. I want to say there's about, let me find it. I actually do not have it with me. I can get you the exact numbers, but I want to say there's like 32,000 units in the city, and about 28, 29 of those are actually inhabited. in the city and about twenty-eight, twenty-nine of those are actually inhabited.
Significant.
Quite a few, yes. I'll definitely send you those numbers. I just don't have them.
Councilmember Hegelson?
You talked a minute ago, I guess, the redlining, you know, that's, I think, been eighty to ninety years ago. And granted, there may be something from a long time ago, but eighty to ninety years ago, I guess that's why you maybe didn't remember it because it was probably like in the 1930s, I believe, is when, when the redlining happened, which was changed. And so with that, what we have to do, if we really want to look at cause and effect, we gotta look, I guess, something, since probably very few people were even living eighty or ninety years ago, let alone somebody wanting to buy a house eighty or ninety years ago. If there are twenty, that would mean there are hundred, a hundred and ten today, so I don't think we have too many centurions living around here. So with that, we gotta look at what we're doing today, I think. I mean, so, you know, we can talk about something eighty, hundred years ago. We gotta look at what is happening today, I think, to make this relative. And relative is, one thing is relative. This program, the rental inspection program that was recommended for implementation, what, ten years ago, seven, eight years ago, ten years ago, probably? Been a while.
It broke out of the ground in 2005.
Two thousand and five, so a long time ago, about fifteen years ago. At first, I heard lots of pushback, and then I've heard kind of nothing. So wondering if there's been effectiveness or if it's been another program that you, that, or who did you, Mr. Martin, or do you, how, what's the effectiveness of it? I guess is, you know, we get lots of programs sometimes, and sometimes we try them and we never, you know, objectively say, well, I think we did what we could. Now it's time to move on. Or, yeah, this is working great, you know, an objective measure.
So, I'll just start with this chart since it's the first one. But the rental program is proactive in nature. We're seeking them out, we find them. It's only for that district, which is also consistent with the community development block grant boundaries. But this chart kind of is a trend that we, over ten years, that IT put together for us. But if you look at it, over the course of ten years, you can, there's a trend going on that is pretty significant in that the more rentals that we do, the more rentals that we, that we go to.
That we inspect.
That we inspect, the less housing complaints we're getting. So it is kind of telling us the story that it is working. It's certainly a big educational piece. It's proactive. Part of the inspection is just educating people on what to do. We work with people rather consistently. We try to obtain with the owner a four-year waiver so that we're not back for four years. We, in that regard, we do have to go back on some of those, but eighty percent of those initial inspections, even after an inspection or two, obtain a four-year waiver. So it's been, it's been very positive. We're starting to see a little bit more with the way we've reorganized staff. There's five of us that actually do these rental inspections where there was just one. So we have an employee, Dana Horn, who was, she was our rental lady for years. And we really, once we, we kind of, once I got on board with the whole rental program and inspections, you know, it was pretty obvious that one person couldn't do all of it. But the longer that we have progressed with this over the past couple of years, three years, from reorganizing staff, there's five of us out there on the street. And there's a lot of, the communication piece has been huge. We're starting to really get to know the landlords, forming relationships with them, calling them, meeting there on site, and people are getting on board with it. So I think that's kind of the general story there.
So this is saying, here's the inspections and here's the complaints.
We used to be just reactive in nature, just handling housing complaints.
Yes.
If we got a complaint, we went to it. Now, we're actually going before they even, we even get to them. And they're proactive in nature. They're scheduled out. We give them, I think it's thirty days to schedule them, so they have time to kind of get things together, know that we're coming. They know we're there.
So is this directly a chart that could be readily, readily correlate? You know, rather than the more you have less problems, the more that property owners fix up their property, whether you inspected them or not? Is there a correlation between the actual inspections versus rising property values or more renters that property owners want to attract? Or is there, how do we correlate those two?
Probably to answer that, we're seeing a lot of people complying before we get there.
Okay.
Which tells me that they've got the message about what we're coming for.
Okay. And so with that, you're not, is it seeing a negative effect? You know, obviously, the more, if somebody fixes up, fixes up an old house and they put in granite countertops and they put in nice marble bathrooms and whatnot, they typically are going to rent that for a whole lot more than they would if they just put in your normal countertops. Have you found the increase in, you know, by following lots of inspections, have you found that less affordable rentals, rental availability? Because they're having to do certain things to meet your code requirements?
We're meeting minimum standards.
Okay.
But there's this, this piece that instead of an older window, they might be doing replacement windows, you know, some of the more efficiency stuff, that, that in turn is going to help out the entire rental process.
Is that code? That's not, that's not part of the thing?
It's their option.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Wilder?
Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciated the information. One thing, do we ever compare ourselves to other cities? As far as I know, you mentioned about fifty percent are rental at this current time. Do we ever compare to other cities? Is it the same trend we're seeing in other localities?
I have not done that comparison. It's definitely something we could do if you want us to look at other Virginia-first cities, or we could definitely do that.
Okay. Just thank you.
This on that may be a better comparison, maybe our change internally. You know, other cities may have had different things, but if we were, you know, twenty years ago, we used to be twenty percent rental and eighty percent owner occupied, and now we're fifty, fifty, and we have a goal of having more owner occupied. Are we getting closer to our goal or farther, just looking at our trend internally? Maybe a good option, too. I think that would be a.
I know when we had a presentation, I think it was two weeks ago or so, whenever it was, where the person who presented mentioned about, I think, persons were kind of going more so towards rental, I believe. And so I'm trying to see that the normal trend, what are other localities seeing as well?
I think there's a lot of variables in that. Things like how many colleges and universities are in that locality, but we can definitely look at that.
And I would like a presentation on redlining in our city. And I know that there is a local professor who does a very good job at explaining that. And so I will give the name to the city manager. Okay, thank you. So that, and the relevance is, is when we look at this fifty, fifty, because I'm looking at generational ownership in certain areas of our city that may have limited ownership to a more, more majority community that's still living in these neighborhoods and communities where we have the high rental populations. And so to me, there's a correlation over time. I understand it was eighty, ninety, and even calculating a hundred, ten years ago. I'm fifty. And so there's very much relevant, some families that have had ownership of properties probably for fifty years or about there or so. And my thing is, where's the investment when you look at some of the neighborhoods, not all, but these longer-term ownership? And, you know, the rental inspections are good, but you're still seeing, because I believe you were saying how much you would rather have some long-term ownership and that sort of thing. But I just want to see the relevance of how all of these historical things have culminated to us seeing such a heavy presence in certain areas of town. And I think there is a correlation, not to say moving forward. I don't know how it impacts what we talk about, but I think just as, as far as an education process, because it's about the second or third time this topic has come up, and some on council don't understand what it is. So I want us to have a understanding, starting of what it is for the general public and for council members. Is there anyone else who would be in agreement to that presentation? Okay, Councilmember Wright, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would, I would second the call for that presentation. I think it'd be really interesting for us. I mean, I think we can, we can certainly, I don't know what the strength of like the lingering effects of redlining are in our community. I'm sure that's sort of up for, for discussion, and I'm curious to hear what the, I think it's the Randolph College professors, they're doing a lot of study on this.
It is.
What he would have to present on the subject. But I think, you know, it's incumbent on us as policymakers for the community to think about, even though it was, let's say, eighty or ninety years ago, what the effects of this practice, what they might be, and take them into account as we sort of craft policies to drive our community forward. And while, you know, after Councilmember Hegelson brought it up, I looked up just some of the social research about redlining. And the Federal Reserve of Chicago, Bank of Chicago commissioned a study on redlining. And they found that, and I'm just going to quote quickly from the, from the abstract in their report, that redlining had an economically meaningful and lasting effect on the development of urban neighborhoods to reduce credit access and subsequent disinvestment. So I think if we're really going to be serious about this issue, then we ought to consider the, the cause of how our neighborhoods have developed. And I think that's, that's being responsible policymakers.
And Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a couple of comments dealing with the issues that Councilmember Hegelson brought up, which raise the conflict we have when we establish a future land use map and we establish zoning areas, and then we have someone asking us to rezone, and the gymnastics we go through between the owner who advocates the maximum use of his property and it's not right that he should, he or they should restrict the revenue from the use of their property by some artificial zoning that imposes heavy financial burdens on them, particularly to put in all the code amenities that are required, and all they can build is a couple of single-family homes. They ought to be able to maximize the economies of their assets. And then you have, the other argument that's used to justify rezoning to a higher density is that, this is Lynchburg, we have lots of hills and topography that interferes with, with building nice, single-family lots of a certain width and distance that complies with the code, and we should be able to maximize the density of the occupants according to what can be built there. And it's not feasible to build single-family, for the most part, because of those topographical issues. And then, of course, the conflicting with that is the desire to allow affordable housing to persons who cannot afford to own their own home. And so they should be able to work in the city and enjoy life in our city and live in the city, but they can only do that by renting. So those are some general comments and really may not be appropriate, but I thought I just wanted to mention that as, because we deal with that all the time. But with regard to the redlining, I, I, as a teenager, saw the effects of redlining in the city. It was bothersome to me with the volunteer groups that I work with that come down and help rehab homes, some of them very expansive mansions that had been abandoned, the owners moved to the suburbs and chopped them up and rented apartments in them, simply because they were so old and so expensive to maintain, they couldn't be used for anything else. And then there are other homes, more modest homes that were built in the eighteen eighties. They'd been annexed into the city in the eighteen nineties, and they're, now they're downtown neighborhoods. But nevertheless, they required a great deal of financial investment, rehabilitation, upgrading to more modern standards for the day. But it wasn't a racial thing. It wasn't a racial issue. It was not economical to make a loan on a house that already was sixty years old and needed to be greatly rehabbed. So if we are looking at redlining, I think we need to look at all of the factors that come into play on dealing with why some neighborhoods declined. And including with that should be the conversation of what the city has done since the nineteen seventies, at least, to incentivize homeownership or home rehabilitation, whether it be winterization programs, some of the things that LNDF has done, some of the things that Lynchburg Neighborhood Development has done to allow persons to purchase a house for one dollar and fix it up. All of those are relevant to the conversation rather than just focusing on some abhorrent policy that existed in the nineteen thirties and into the forties and post-war that tried to focus our community financial resources in certain areas and neglect others. Thank you.
And, and I agree with that. Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll offer a mild correction to you. It's the Housing Authority that had the Dollar House program and the homeownership program and continues that good work today. I think, though, I'm a big believer in learning from history and past mistakes and so forth. And I would absolutely embrace the opportunity to learn about redlining because frankly, I know nothing about it. But I think that given what our slate is this spring with the news that we have today about, well, we're gonna have to search for a new, a new city manager, we've got a budget, it's going to be a busy spring regardless. How about, can we read it? Is it something that could be given to us that we could read instead of taking time here? I think that would be, I think that would be a better use of council's time, but I'd certainly welcome the opportunity to learn about it. Also, if you're, I think you're, you've comparing apples and oranges because if you look, I can, I'd be willing to bet that the rental mix was completely different fifteen years ago. We've had an explosion of apartments that have gone up. The work, the growth of Liberty has brought in so many students and has created such a demand for apartments that I think that ratio has been skewed in the last fifteen years, maybe even less than that, maybe, maybe more like eight years, in the past eight years. So I think if we're trying to say that we set ourselves up for a fifty, fifty ratio between owners and renters in two thousand nineteen, because of something we did in two thousand, in nineteen forty or nineteen fifty, I think that's a stretch. I think it's because of the decisions we made eight years ago. I'm sure there were some impacts, but the majority of the impacts have been in the last, in the last decade.
I understand. I think it's all relevant to learn. So those who choose to spend an hour with a presentation, choose to spend an hour with a presentation. I still request that we have that presentation. And I agree with Councilmember Nelson. And is there any further thoughts? I think everyone has pretty much gave comments. Councilmember Hegelson?
Just to follow up just slightly on what Councilmember Perrow just said. You know, with that explosion that we've had, that was kind of probably an anomaly, right? And so we cannot make an anomaly, we can't prospectively say an anomaly is going to continue. So when you do that, you're making some pretty false assumptions. So as we rezone or as we contemplate rezoning and making things more dense and having more properties that have one versus, you know, fifteen renters in it versus one homeowner, we don't want to, we want to learn from our recent history where we've had a lot of explosion of apartments, but realize that that may not continue out for infinity. And so we don't need to just keep on saying, let's keep on building more, because there's plenty of room in the counties. You have Campbell, that's five hundred square miles. You have Bedford, that's eight hundred square miles. You got, you know, lots of other places. Because if you overallow and then you have a glut, then it's going to do the opposite effect. You're going to then take property values that were increasing, and because you oversupply, all of a sudden, you knock out. all of a sudden, you knock out the value of the property because you oversupplied. So I, I just think we need to be mindful as we're going forward, not to just say, let's keep adding more and more, because what's happened in the past, we're going to create more. Also, Mr. Martin said that retail follows rooftops. Well, I think Amazon has a little different story about that today, but lots of things are done, not at your local neighborhood store. I mean, you hit a button, and you get a drone dropping it in. So lots of things in retail has changed dramatically. I mean, you go over to the mall, and it's now lots less stores over there, but experiences, you know, so.
Sure, no doubt. Amazon has affected the way economics work. What I would offer to you, though, is that the reason Lynchburg has maintained so well, and we didn't see the downturn the past five, six, whatever years ago it was, is because we had a stable population base. And if you look at the retail growth that's occurring, it's occurring in the city, because that's where the population center is. It's not occurring in the counties. And I think a lot of the counties would love to see some of it.
Thank you for that. And also, I had a question on properties that I know the Housing Authority has had conversations about, the redevelopment of properties in the neighborhoods, particularly these neighborhoods where maybe homeownership is tied up into a lot of different legal heirs and that sort of thing. And all of these programs we talked about in the past that we did, is there something that we need to do to work with? Because we've had the meeting with the Housing Authority and the Commissioners, is there something we need to do more of together to encourage that some of these neglected lots and, and places, homes in the neighborhoods are available to people for homeownership? You know, I hear in other places, things like land banks, and, and I'm not sure if that applies in this situation, but we knew, I think we had about 3,000 properties, is that the number you all gave at a presentation recently? It was a high number of properties that are either tied up in different owners owning them, or they are just neglected, abandoned properties that are in, sitting in neighborhoods. And I want to say that it came up about, we don't have a land bank, we don't have an avenue to, to facilitate ownership to other...
Where the city can go in and actually do the improvements on the property, and then...
Right.
There are mechanisms that I believe are actually enabled by state code, but we haven't done that yet.
Okay. And I, I don't know, I can't remember the details of it, but...
The program that the city used, the difficulty is, there isn't a really convenient way to get the hand, property out of the hands of, of say, multiple owners, where there are multiple heirs, or even a neglectful owner. If the taxes aren't paid, which we do routinely each year, we sell delinquent tax properties at public auction, in the hopes that a responsible owner can, will buy them. Another option that we used for a number of years was the Spot Blight Program, when we partnered with the Housing Authority, when the, the city inspector's office would notify, would identify blighted properties, they would pass that along to the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority would then contact the owner and ask them what they were planning to do to fix up their property. If the owner didn't submit a plan, then the Housing Authority would come to the city, ask the city to acquire the property by eminent domain. A lot of times, just starting that process convinced the property owner who was neglecting the property to sell it to a new owner, who would hopefully fix it up. Or in some instances, the Housing Authority would actually acquire the properties, and then convey them to a new owner, who would, and the Housing Authority would often have a contract with them that would require them to fix up the properties. The city hasn't, the Housing Authority, because of some changes in federal regulations, because of turnover in personnel, that Spot Blight Program hasn't been used for a number of years. But that certainly is another possibility that could be reinstated. The, the difficulty with that program is, somebody has to put up the money to acquire those properties. You have to pay the owner the fair value for the property. Now, given, a lot of those properties aren't worth, you know, a whole lot, but you still have to have the money to be able to acquire the properties through that process in order to get them in the hands of a new owner. But other than selling tax delinquent properties at public auction, or the Spot Blight Program, there just aren't a whole lot of ways in Virginia to get the property out of the hands of a neglectful owner, or a situation where the property's owned by numerous heirs, into the hands of, of a new owner, who will hopefully take care of the property.
And Mr. Irwin, it's also the change in the Virginia Constitution regarding eminent domain had a significant impact on the Housing Authority's ability to do that. I do believe that we'll be, City Council will be seeing a property come up here shortly under the new, I'm trying to remember that, do you remember that acronym? It's, it's no longer Spot Blight, it's the Neighborhood Improvement Program, or something like that. It has a, it's a swell new acronym that balances it. And I think we'll be seeing something coming forward again, because there have been some recent changes that have provided more flexibility to us in that. And it, but it does exactly what Mr. Irwin explained.
So I think we've talked about a lot of things. Discouraging substandard housing, how we can improve that. We've talked about how we can maybe promote and encourage homeownership. We've talked about the ratio of rental versus ownership over citywide. We've kind of talked around what the city's stance is on, you know, our population growth. Do we want to encourage growth or not? And I'm not sure we've ever gotten a clear answer on that, and we probably won't get that tonight. But I really have four takeaways for staff. One is that we'll share the American Community Survey data with council, so you can look at that and see what that breakdown is. We will compare the city to other Virginia first cities, and try and look at ourselves over time to see how that has changed. We will set a presentation up on redlining in the city. I never did, we, you do want that? Okay. I'm not sure I'll be the one doing that, but praise, yeah, okay. All right, standards for mixed use in commercial districts. That was brought up. Is that something council, as a body, wants us to pursue? Or what you brought up about having certain standards for mixed use?
And the other thing, I think that Councilmember Nelson mentioned, was, you know, rezoning an R1, because with all those requirements, putting in the sidewalks, the curb and gutter, the sewer, all those different things, make it economically unfeasible for someone to take an R1 property and build a few houses on it, so...
I, I don't think that's true, really, because we talked about that back in December, and what the city does to offset that, and has done to offset it for many, many years.
So when somebody...
I think, I think what's driving that is really what people see the value of their property is.
So when somebody brings that up, then, as a, as a, you know, as a reason, that that's the false reason, then?
I, I would argue that it's not the only reason. Absolutely, and I'd be happy to share that presentation with them.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, we're good, thank you. I do have a roll call right now. Thank you for the presentation, and I hope we didn't bog you down with too much more, but thank you. Roll call, and I will start with Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, no items.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Perrow.
Yes, Madam Mayor. One item on our desk, we have the official statement relating to the issuance of $49,425,000 in general obligation public improvement bonds. I just wanted to congratulate the city on such an extraordinary interest rate that we were able to get. Also, take a look at the top right at the bond ratings from Fitch, Moody's, and Standard and Poor's. I'm not an expert on this, but those look excellent to me. I know it's not the, not AAA, but it's, it's about as close as you can get. So just congratulations on the city on a very well-done cheer release.
With that, just, weren't we AA3 before on Moody's? Which would be an up, okay. I thought they're, okay. No items.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
No items.
Councilmember Wilder?
I had the privilege of going to the 100th Celebration for, I think it was the Kiwanis, I believe. Somebody help me out. Again, at the Virginia Hotel, I think about two weeks ago.
Okay.
And they're going to be building a playground, I think at Riverfront Park. So it's, it's an exciting time to be there for that event, and what they're doing for our community, for our children. So we're excited for, excited for them. And also, they had a presentation, a city forum by the Rush Homes, about the developers they're building on Jubilee, on Florida Avenue. So I was able to attend that presentation, and hear some of the concerns of, of some of the residents. And they, they were able to explain it to them more so about the person, the type of person that kind of live in the Rush Homes. So I think it was very informative for the persons to hear from the presentation from the, from the Rush Homes as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
No items.
Thank you. So I have a couple of items that I'll read through, and then something I'll ask Mr. Irwin to help me with as far as language. First, there's an open house and ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Jefferson Park Neighborhood Center, which is at 405 North York Street in Darrington. This is the open house, which begins at 11:00 a.m. and ends at 6:00 p.m. The ribbon-cutting ceremony is at 5:00 p.m. So Jefferson Park Neighborhood Center is in the Darrington neighborhood, for those who wish to attend, on January 30th. So January 30th is that event. And then, a First Fridays mini-exhibit will be on Friday, February 7th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Lynchburg Museum, 901 Court Street. The topic is Lynchburg Places in the Green Book. Again, Lynchburg Places in the Green Books, which we chose, especially for Black History Month. Displays will include copies of several green books, a map of the city showing green book stops, and historical and contemporary photographs of the business, businesses. So again, that's First Fridays, and I think people are familiar with the most recent movie Green Book, so that's why it's a popular topic right now. And also, before going into consideration of a closed meeting, given the announcement for today that was made by our city manager, which is that her retirement is happening. So for those who have not heard, our city manager has decided to retire. But I did want to ask Mr. Irwin if we could go into closed session to discuss the process, if anyone has questions on what happens now in the process after her announcement.
Madam Mayor, just, I guess, if we could hold off on that, I think, I mean, I don't want us to go into closed session on that now. I mean, I just, I, I, let's, let the dust settle. I mean, just my personal thought. I just, I, I think that's not respectful.
Counsel really can't go and hold a closed session to discuss the process you're going to use to select a new manager, or the qualities that you're looking for in a new manager. All that has to be done in public. Counsel can only have a closed session to consider the applications of individual specific candidates for the position, and to hold interviews with those candidates.
Okay.
But the general discussion of how we'll select the new manager, the process we'll use, the qualities we're looking for in a manager, all that has to be done in public.
Okay. And I just wanted to bring that up, because we do have several new council members who have not been in on that process. So that's why we think, you know, the more time we have to educate council members and/or ask a few questions, we want to be able to do that. So thank you. Next is consideration of a closed meeting to...
Madam Mayor, could I?
Yes, go right ahead.
On that? I think it's important that we do start this process soon. Can we schedule the very next work session, some time to talk about it? And talk about the process, make some decisions. Are we going to have a consultant? Is there a national search? You know, those, those types of questions?
Correct.
And set up a schedule. I guess those would be the objectives to accomplish during that work session.
Right, and that's, and, and what I do appreciate is the city manager giving us this time.
Oh, yeah.
And so, while we are glad for the city manager, it is definitely a time that we want to reflect on the job Mr. Verchek has done for our city. And so I appreciate that. And there'll be future opportunities for, for what I'm saying now, but we do want to make sure we have enough time to discuss all of that, and that the public knows, and there are other meetings that will be set up in the future behind that. So I just wanted to get that out there. So not to rush things, but just to make sure that everyone, we're on the same page. All right, thank you. Any further thought along that? All right, next is consideration of a closed meeting to consider appointments to the Lynchburg Regional Airport Commission and the Linkag Board pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion?
Some more.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So we are now in...
Hit a button? We're not, we're not at easy glass, we can hit a button.
Let's move. There we go. We are all in closed meeting right now. Thank you.